Is everyone ready?
There he is.
I think so you can do business, I'll start with Mr. Taylor, so if you please stand up. You Jeremy J. Taylor solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of County Board of Supervisors in Woodbury County, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law.
I will.
Then if you would just sign, please.
Want you to pull that chair out of the way there.
Can we turn around? I don't know if this is my good side.
P.J.
Do you Patrick P.J. Jennings solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of County Attorney in Woodbury County, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? Can we raise your right hand? Do you Michael R. Clayton solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of County Treasurer in Woodbury County, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Sure. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you ladies and gentlemen. First order of business having presented itself before us is the election of a temporary chair to call this meeting to order, lead us in the pledge, and entertain discussion of a permanent chair who will preside during calendar year 2015. The floor is thus open to nominations.
I want Jackie Smith to be the chair for next coming year.
Supervisor Clausen nominates Supervisor Smith to be temporary chair over this meeting. Is that correct? Supervisor Clausen?
No, I was nominating her for the chair for 2015.
Right now the issue before us is who will be presiding as temporary chair over the meeting, so we're opening the floor to nominations for temporary chair. Would you like to nominate Ms. Smith for temporary chair to preside over the meeting?
No.
I would nominate Mark Munson as temporary chair.
Supervisor Ung nominates Supervisor Munson to be temporary chair. Are there other nominations? Seeing none, by acclamation or general consent Supervisor Munson, you are temporary chair. And at this time I will trade.
Thank you.
Okay, let's do the pledge.
My pledge, ladies, is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, would entertain nominations for permanent chair?
I make the same motion again, I nominate Jackie Smith to be the chair for 2015.
Any other nominations?
I think it's important that we have some sort of a discussion on the issues before we go forward with a vote. I think the perception of the past has certainly been that the chair is chosen behind the scenes and it's at least my contention that we open the floor to more discussion than has been in the past, and I'm speaking for myself here.
What kind of discussion would you like?
Finish nominations. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Supervisor Munson.
Okay. Do nominations, discussion.
Would we be open to questions of the nominees? If that would be...
I would be open to them, sure.
So if we could just have sort of an open dialogue and we're interested, I think, as a board in moving an agenda on transparency, accountability, openness, and basically what I'd call a good government. And so would you be able to speak maybe in either one of you, if we could ask maybe in the order of who was nominated, how you might support transparency, openness, and accountability and moving our board in that direction?
Well, I did have the position one time before as chair, and I do believe that that is the way I chaired this board. I worked very hard to provide a flow of information, to listen to the department heads, other elected officials. Takes a lot of work to do that, takes a lot of time to do that, and I believe I was successful that year. There didn't seem to be too much controversy when I was chair. I think with the dynamics, I'm a good person to do it this year. I will take it. I, you know, wanting it, you know, I've had this discussion, do you want it? Well, I suppose I do because I think that I can move us forward in the right direction. I believe in job creation, I believe in listening to people and putting people through respect, so. And I'm not into it for my own ego, I'm into it to do the best I can for the reasons I was elected, and that's to make this a great community. So whichever way it goes, I'll support whoever's elected.
I have a follow-up question to that. I think voters sent a very clear message in the last elections of the need for transparency and public discourse. To be frank, the most public, unpopular, and non-transparent decision of the previous board, I would have to say, and a big campaign issue and a big public discourse issue, was courthouse security, outsourcing that to the board as opposed to the sheriff. This has put us into legal hot water, this has created a bunch of unnecessary drama, and Republicans and Democrats have called it a fiasco. So I would ask you both this question, but especially Supervisor Smith, as you are the one that brought it forward, would you... I feel I'm lacking the confidence that you would reverse this.
Reverse courthouse security?
Reverse the outsourcing of courthouse security away from the sheriff's office.
Well, I guess at this time I would...
Yeah, this is way, we're getting way beyond the pale here. This is, you're electing a chair, you're not doing or redoing something that's happened in the past. If it's on the agenda, I'm willing to discuss it, but none of this is on the agenda.
Everything is on the agenda when we're electing the chair. This is a discussion of the issues that we, at the pleasure of the board...
Let's have him tell us.
There's no discussion or action being taken on the item, so, I mean, the question can be answered and Supervisor can answer if she wants.
I don't mind answering, but I want to make sure I understand the question. You're asking that today I would reverse the courthouse security decision?
I'm saying I don't have confidence that you would in the future as chair, and I think that is...
I'm not sure I would. It seems to be working just fine, we save the taxpayers $98,000. We'll see how the grievance comes out. This is really a grievance between CWA and Ask Me, on which union they belong to. If they're Ask Me employees, it only makes sense that it would stay with the supervisors. If it's CWA, well then, you know, that's a different scenario, I believe, but at this point in time, I do not know why you would disassemble something that's successful.
Mr. Munson? Would you answer both of those questions, both in terms of transparency, openness, and accountability? What you would do as chair in order to champion those things as good government qualities at the local level, and then what about courthouse security? Is that something that as chair you would lead in a different direction, or would you continue the pleasure of the past forward?
I think we need to overhaul the agenda, make it more user-friendly. I think we need to move, obviously, this activity to the basement so that more than 20 people can be seated, maybe 22 with the little ones there. Courthouse security, I have thought from the beginning should be as the chair.
So are you saying that you would lead this board in a direction that would put not only courthouse security under sworn the sheriff's department, but also as sworn law enforcement?
Yes.
Can I ask one more general issue, and then as far as my concerns, I won't belabor the point, but I think we'll move on to an election unless there are other members who have questions of the nominees. I'm concerned about property taxes. The property tax rate, not only in terms of tax askings, but also in terms of the actual rate that's being asked of our county residents. And so maybe in fairness, maybe I'll start with you Supervisor Munson this time, if that's all right. How you will work to dedicate not only future revenues from CF toward property tax relief, but in this year that we're not seeing those revenues yet, what will you do in order to hold the line on property taxes and do a review of what is actually mandated of this board versus what are non-mandated services?
I think there were two things that come out of the elections, from the municipal down to the local. I hope I can keep my voice. The two things were make government work and no more taxes. I think we've got to work very hard at doing both. It's going to be a real struggle in the budget because there are some things that are going to cost more money, so something's going to have to be pinched pretty hard. It's going to be a tough year. CF, I think a lot of that needs to go back to property tax, but some of it has to go to economic growth to create more taxes to offset what's going on.
Would you support a budget that increases property taxes?
No. If there's one thing I heard, it was no more tax.
We asked the same...
Sure. Well, even looking at the situation Woodbury County is in this year as far as preliminary budgets as opposed to a year ago, we're about a million dollars ahead of where we were a year ago. So being able to hold the line on property taxes, possibly lowering taxes, is much more a reality this year than it's been in quite a few years since I've sat in this chair. So I think it's pretty easy to say yes, we won't have to raise taxes, we'll have to do some cutting, but it's not nearly the amount that we have had to do in years past. So is there another part to the question?
Just the amount of money or the dedication of CF revenues, and then also the blunt question I asked Supervisor Ung, would you support a budget that would increase either the tax askings or the tax rate?
I would say I don't want to, and I do not believe we will have to. I hate to say never because that's just a word that tends to come back and haunt me, so I stay away from that word, but I will make every effort not to, and I don't think we should have to, I really don't, looking at it. I think it's very, very possible that we can even reduce it. So as far as CF, you know, we hired an outside consultant, and I know Mark was able to arrange a meeting with the two of you to go to the plan, which is good, and we have laid out a very systematic way to create more jobs, create economic growth, and choosing TIF funds. I have been behind that 100% since the first day I was elected. The plan is great, I think we are on the forefront of what counties don't usually do, and we are just so lucky to have that revenue, and it really, you know, you think having that is an easy thing to do, it's not. You have to be very thoughtful and you have to plan ahead, and we need to adopt that plan. And it's laid out, and we need to then roll it out to the rest of our county. You know, the county is much larger than just the I-29 corridor. So, you know, the plan is to adopt it and then start radiating out for broad throughout the whole county. So we have every opportunity to go forward, and we've captured the TIF to do it, so.
If I could just dovetail off the CF Industries TIF issue, I think there's a lot of great ideas in the McCurran Engineering Plan that we all have heard about. It does only, however, cover the I-29 corridor with TIF dollars. That would be negating the entire rest of the county, and I don't think that's what you're suggesting, but I do think that we need to get some statements on record as far as, as far as, I don't think a rubber stamp of the entire plan at this point is appropriate. I would ask, with the emphasis on the need for rural infrastructure, road repairs being fifth or sixth in the state among counties for a number of bridges, how Supervisor Munson and Smith, would you prioritize rural infrastructure and work with the county engineer perhaps more closely to ensure that CF revenues don't just get totally and entirely spent ahead of time in the I-29 corridor?
It's difficult to, it has to be used in the TIF district for the most part, but doing that could possibly lose enough of our money. We put about a million and a half, million eight out of the local option sales tax into secondary roads, which is substantial. The more we can do for roads, the better. We've got a lot of bridges that are issues out there. I think you still have to deal with that mega site, that's still a very high priority, which will require an interchange, so.
The only thing I would add to that, you know, we have the bridge program where we did go out and do an outreach to all the communities and basically asked for a tax increase, and it really, it was driven by the large farmers, landowners, and we just spent a lot of time going out doing education, getting feedback. So we really, you know, did what, again, many counties have not done, I don't know any other county that's done it, had to go out and attack the issue of bridges, so I think I've done campaigning, if that's all right with you.
No, that's fine, I appreciate the openness and the discussion that we've had, I think it's very good and healthy one, and highly respect you both, the best person wins. So at this time, I'm satisfied as far as discussion.
I do have one more question. To my knowledge, Woodbury County gives the biggest pay bump in pay to the county chair, so it's an important position. My question is, how do you see your potential role as chair as far as the agenda? I've heard from other supervisors in other counties, I've heard from people in this county, just general frustrations of getting things on the agenda, passing an agenda out that is transparent, that is detailed, has somewhat of an executive summary in it. Would either of you care to speak to that as far as what's, we all know how things have been, what would you change in the running of the board meetings, whether it's here, out in the county, in the basement?
Part of the agenda, I would let out, use the Sioux City Agenda format. It's pretty open, they have discussion after each item. I think no need to reinvent the wheel. I think anybody can suggest a topic for the agenda, that would be good. There should be discussion after every agenda item from the audience, as they do in Sioux City. I think we do need to get out in the county, meet with the mayor and councils in a joint meeting atmosphere, and the sooner the better. Now, that's a little more complicated than just saying it, but it needs to be worked on.
Would you be open to changing meeting times to make them more accessible to the public?
I would.
You know, we do have opportunity for discussion after the agenda items. I mean, certainly with feedback, once you've sat in this chair, I think there needs to be changes. I mean, you know, I, when I was chair before, I was open to help from everyone on board. I never certainly thought I was, you know, sat on a different level than anyone else, I just shouldered a lot more to work than it seemed like what you do, which just comes with being chair, it takes a lot of time to disseminate information. I'm open to meeting times, I don't care when we meet, you know, and that's kind of tricky, that's why we push for going on YouTube video and making them more accessible, because if you work an evening shift, you know, you can't come at night, so there's really no perfect time, but I know you, Jeremy, used bits and pieces from our meeting and your campaign, you know, and you got that because it's accessible. So it isn't that we're not accessible, but if people want a different meeting time, you know, I'm fine, I'm retired, I can meet anytime, so I'm not tied to any certain time, if it makes sense. I don't want to pay overtime and two of our employees have to come in, so.
Okay, we're good? Roll call.
Let's have to do it to call for a vote on the first nomination and call for a vote on the second nomination.
Can't we do them together?
The way that I see it then is that you vote on the first nomination and you vote on the second.
Okay.
So, you call the roll on the first nomination. Smith, Hung?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Munson?
No.
Lawson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
On the second one. Supervisor Munson, Hung?
Yes.
Taylor?
Aye.
Munson?
Aye.
Lawson?
No.
Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Here we go. We have approval of appointments of the county engineer, Mr. Mark Nara.
Mr. Chair, sorry, before we move on to that item of discussion, may I bring something up? In lieu of you as chairperson, there seems to be need for a vice chair at times unless there are no times that you're ever able to not be here, so if...
I've missed five meetings in 10 years.
So in the very rare circumstance that you miss another, it seems like it would behoove the board to have a...
I was thinking about it this morning, I'll tell you.
And so I wonder if we can entertain a discussion on that item before moving on to any other agenda business.
Take nominations for vice chair.
Nominate Supervisor Taylor for vice chair.
Any other nominations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Aye.
Okay. County engineer, we need a motion to...
For the record, you vote aye.
Did I?
Yes.
Okay. Three, two?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to get to you yet, Mark. Need a motion to approve Mark Nara as county engineer.
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Need a motion to approve medical examiner, Dr. Thomas Carroll.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Let's see, Development and Conservation Authority Board of Directors, that's been on that for 10 years, be happy to do it again.
What does it entail?
Going to Oakland, Iowa, four times a year for regional meetings. The authority is over hungry canyons, which secondary roads does well by, and the Lus Hill Alliance. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
This motion is to reappoint. You Supervisor mention?
Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We need to designate the official county newspapers, that would be the Journal, the Mobile Record, and the Sergeant Bluff Advocate. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Secondary roads, Mr. Nara.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for having me. Next here. The two items are part of your typical annual business, the first being a resolution to authorize me to execute certification and completion of federal aid, state aid, and foreign market construction during 2015. Please get followed with department transportation.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Consider resolution to authorize county engineer to close any secondary road construction, routine maintenance, or emergencies during 2015. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Okay, we're down to the last. Hearing of any individual or group to make a presentation on items not on the agenda and supervisor's concerns.
Move it.
least of the board to probably plan on some on next Thursday. Monday, we do not have any ready yet, the books are out, we can have budget discussion Tuesday on the overall situation of the budget, and then we can start hearings Thursday if that works.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for having me, Javi, from next year. The two items are part of your typical annual business, the first being a resolution to authorize me to execute certification and completion of federal aid, state aid, and foreign market construction during 2015, these get filed with Department of Transportation.
Need a motion?
Moving.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Consider resolution to authorize county engineer to close any secondary road construction, routine maintenance, or emergencies during 2015. Need a motion?
Moving.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Okay. We're down to the last hearing of any individual or group to make a presentation on items not on the agenda and supervisor's concerns.
In regards to budget discussions and hearings, I'd like to get the consent at least of the board to plan on some on next Thursday. Monday, we do not have any ready yet, the books are out, we can have budget discussion Tuesday on the overall situation of the budget, and then we can start hearings Thursday, if that works well for everybody. We then go back to Tuesdays, if we need them, we go Thursdays.
We talk about it Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we'll have enough time, we'll have enough time to get somebody lined up for the appointee power notice, so we can do that Tuesday if you prefer.
Okay.
I'm going to tentatively plan we do it on Thursday, though, so hopefully we can get started. I mean, if we don't, we don't, but I'm going to put it in my calendar.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
Let's move, Mr. Chair.
All right, here we go. Thank you.